Please.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, January 16th at 7:30 PM. Mr. Winarsky, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington is absent. Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schoff, and Mel Witherspoon is with us on the phone. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I would ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, both locally and globally. We ask that we, as a council, work together with the proper information and the best information possible to make the best decisions for the citizens of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval minutes for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, and bills for payment on January 11th, 18th, and 25th, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
I believe that brings us to repository sales. Looks like we have Mr. Henry here. How are you, sir?
I'm good, Council President. Good evening, President and Council members. Scott Henry, Director of the City's Redevelopment Authority. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of the Erie Land Bank. The Land Bank has submitted a bid to the County Tax Claim Bureau to purchase 608 East 7th Street from the repository. That property has, you know, a bit of a history. It was sold at a tax sale in 2012. The purchaser at that sale has not paid any taxes since that point in time. It has cycled back through the tax sale process again with no one purchasing it. And was eventually declared blighted by the City's Bladed Property Review Committee in 2016. And so, you know, it is the Land Bank's intent to acquire that property, you know, while we haven't had right of entry or anything, so we don't know a lot about the condition. My guess is after all these years, it's probably going to be a demolition candidate. So, you know, the Land Bank would take care of that, and then we would try to identify proper use for the vacant lot, whether that be a side yard, or we would talk to Sir Vieri, who was working in that neighborhood, to determine what might be the best use.
Any questions from council? Mr. Henry, I guess one question I would have, as you being involved with the Land Bank, is that common procedure maybe, you purchasing a property that is inadequate to rebuild is possibly just demolish it and then move forward from there, or?
Well, that's one of the Land Bank's primary goals at this point, is to, you know, work on properties that are blighted. And, you know, 90% of those require demolition just due to the long period of time that they've been deteriorating.
Thank you. Any other questions, council?
Nobody wants it, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's one more, Mr. Winarsky. President Winarsky.
We have one more repository sale tonight. Please step up. Please state your name and the property you're looking at.
My name is Mahadi LaSadi.
Property you're looking at is?
Yeah, the property for West Side is 23rd Street.
And I'll help you only, just 2061, West 23rd is the memo we got?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is your purpose for this? It looks like it's a vacant property at this time. What is the purpose you're looking to purpose it for, or purchase it for?
Well, I buy the property, the house, and the close to my house property, I try buy it.
You own the house and you're trying to buy the property next door, which is this property?
Yes, sir.
Just to use it as additional?
Yeah.
Land, okay. Any questions from council? Very good. We won't vote on this tonight, but we are aware of your intentions, and it will be voted on at a later meeting, okay? Thanks for coming by.
Thank you so much.
Brings us to citizens to be heard, unless there's any other repositories, any other repositories this evening? Brings us to citizens to be heard. Nobody is scheduled on our docket, so please come forward.
My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chestnut Street. I am here today to discuss matters about the school board and our Erie School District in terms of the taxation that they want to do. At first, by the news, the superintendent had said it was going to be 2.5%. And then he came out saying that it's going to be 3.5%. And his 3.5% was pretty much based on, it's kind of crazy what it was based on. It was in the newspaper back in November 9th, 2018. And he basically was talking about how these nonprofits are handling all this money or whatever. So I guess that means that the residents of Erie is donating this money to these nonprofits. But one thing that the school superintendent, as well as the board over there, don't understand, it doesn't go by. They can't go by what's happening in somebody else's world. They got to only deal with their world. And in their world, there's a, there's a formula. That formula consists of the tax that they receive, and is also consists of the state aid that they receive. Anything over, and that is what they call their program. Anything over the program has to be voted on by the citizens of Erie. But that has never happened. 2012, that did not happen, when they double taxed the landlords. 2016, that didn't happen, when they went back and double taxed the citizens of Erie. And now he's talking about 3.5%. Apparently, he doesn't know, and he should, as many times I have been over to the school district arguing about 2012 and 2016. He should understand that taxes can't be, can be done in percentages. The Public School Finance Act of 1994 lays out, and it's pretty much how the city does and how the county does. His taxation got to be the same way. Now, looking at my property valued at $75,000, I believe, at 3.5%, that mean my tax for the school district would be $2,500. That's astronomical, and it's crazy. But no matter how many times I go over there and talk to that board, they act like they don't understand. But there's a formula, and he might be taxing too much, because according to the formula, he only can tax up until, up to the program. Whatever that program amount is, he only can tax up to that program. So if he have so many students, and let's say that he wants to tax this 3.5% or whatever, but according to the population, it doesn't say that he can do that. So apparently, the school district do not even follow their own school code, Pennsylvania school code. They don't follow that. And they don't follow the Public School Financial Act of 94. Now, I looked at Code 2121, Title 21, Code 2121. He has to get apartment, department approval, okay? No public school building may be, may be constructed, contracted, or reconstructed in two, three, and four class districts without approval of specification and plans. Now, they can have a plan, but the plan got to be reviewed, got to be voted on by the citizens. Everything they do over there, they leave the citizens of Erie out. The man has no honor. That's the only way I can, I have another name for him, but you guys might think I'm crazy if I call him this, but he has no honor. He's a person without honor. Now, when you go back to Barker, whatever Barker did, I will give him credit. He has style, and he had honor. Badham got out of here, should have went to jail. We, the people of Erie, don't do a thing. And we need to stand up and start doing things about what the school district is doing to us. This supervisor over there, it was 2.5%. And he said somebody going to come forward, but it'd just be a couple of people. The only couple of people would be-
Thank you, Mr. Bibbs. Unfortunately, your time's up. Okay. But he can't, he can't do the taxing like he want to.
Hello. My name's Bob Lekowski. And I have an issue that has arisen approximately five months ago, when I went to the mayor's office and talked to the secretary there, and told them that they weren't raising a flag at City Hall. And in those five months, I tried to get state representatives involved in that. They wouldn't get involved in it. Finally, I got ahold of the American Legion. They got involved in it, came down here six weeks ago, and they were told six weeks ago that there was a new flag ordered for the flag pole, an all-weather flag. I don't believe if you're going to order a flag, it takes six weeks to get a flag. But within the last five months, there's been a flag on that flag pole for one week after the American Legion came down here and addressed the situation. And from then on, within the last five months, the flag does not fly at City Hall. It'll fly at the county courthouse, it flies at the library, but it does not fly here. And I would like to see, maybe somebody with some influence can say that, let's start putting that flag up. If you have an all-weather flag, you can leave it up 24/7, 365 days a year. Lot of these businesses around here, like Long Bayfront, they keep their flags up all year round. And you could do the same with an all-weather flag. You know, there wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to have the problem of taking it down every night, putting it up in the morning. But apparently, if there is a flag on order, it would be nice to see the order form, maybe a confirmation number, because I don't know whether or not it was an excuse, or is there one actually on order for the last six weeks? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Several items I wanted to touch base on. One is, this new council now has been in for a year, and I, it's very encouraging to see a member of council discuss the importance of researching things. And thank you very much for those that do that. It's very important in the decision-making process. Now, most of you were here in December 2017, when you approved the budget. Mayor Shember was handed to him. He really didn't have much to do with it. And I do want to thank you for attacking the issues with the budget. It's the only way we're going to get past this thing, so, so thank you for your efforts on that. There are some, as Senator Al Franken would put it, there are just some absurdities that are baffling. One is, it's, it's good news that the city's investment prospectus has gotten write-ups that City Hall has bragged about, but it's absolutely absurd that that write-up would be celebrated, but write-ups that point out problems with City Hall are dismissed, especially when it's a write-up on the front page of the New York Times. I think it's incredibly harmful to dismiss those things instead of taking them on head-on, just like the Wall Street 24/7. When that came out, the minority community came out and confronted it and asked for help, but City Hall completely ignored it, and it only comes up when other people bring it up. I think we need to take these things on head-on to solve them. Otherwise, dismissal just lets them fester. I want to say that now the viaduct, the south end's down, the first deck of the north side, Deck 14 is now down. They're working away on it. Our appeals court schedule is on hold because of the federal government shutdown, so as soon as they get back in operation, we'll find out what the new schedule is. But it's another absurdity to say that two of your five most important things about how to run the city is welcoming, to celebrate welcoming and viaduct, and vibrant neighborhoods, and to celebrate diverse cultures, when removal of the viaduct was so against that. So, you know, it's crazy to see these constant contradictions. People were hoping in the status quo structure that when the viaduct was down, the issue would go away, but the issue does not go away for the people that used to use it. Every day, they're hit with it. Now, looking forward beyond the viaduct, it's concerning that we have this major issue with the Bayfront Parkway going on, and there's complete silence from City Hall on the city's interests of it. And I'm asking you, even though it's a PennDOT project, you cannot sit on the sidelines and let PennDOT just go do what they're going to do without defending the interests of the city in this, because it's an enormous critical impact on how the city links to the Bayfront. And we've seen so many times before, when you just pay attention to vehicles, and you don't pay attention to all the other connectivity you need for a vibrant community, that you end up suffering great losses. And that's what's going to happen with the Bayfront. We have expertise now at City Hall to address this in a professional manner, but it's dead silent. That is crazy to me. The city should be right out in front, saying, "These are our important factors about what's going on with the Bayfront, so just make sure you address those." So I'm asking, please get on that. And one other item that was very interesting was the comment in the public that when there's votes being taken, that the yeses aren't said, it's only the noes that are said, or the abstentions. And I agree with how that looks. When a lot of people criticize City Hall for everyone plays along so they get along, the silence on a yes vote just accentuates that. So please reconsider. Say yes when you want to say yes, and don't just sit there silent, because what it is, it's not showing leadership, it's showing acquiescence to just accept what's handed to you. So please, beyond that, thank you for everything you're diving into to help solve the city's problems, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other citizens to be heard this evening? Maybe one more? Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I have a few issues. Probably don't do no good to have them, but I still, they bothers me if they don't bother you all. I'm still a little upset about that bridge being torn down over there. It really didn't make sense to tear it down. But I guess when our leaders make up their heads, because I believe their mind have kind of shrunk in a little bit, I see no reason why that bridge should have been torn down. I bet you they catching more hell tearing that bridge down than they did when they was putting it up. It just don't make sense. What you going to do about when them kids start getting hit by them cars over there? And there's a possib, great possibility of that. We really supposed to love our kids. I know I love mine. They grown, and I still love them. That's a bad situation. I wish it wouldn't have never happened, tearing that bridge down. That bridge, that bridge wasn't bothering nobody. Nobody. And I have another pet issue here. I see all these contractors around town going about working, but I don't see none of, none of my peoples out there working. Only place I see my peoples working is over there on Parade and 19th and Parade. That don't make sense. All these jobs going on, and there are jobs going on. I don't see no peoples of color out there, and it's not right. Some of you are quick to say, "Oh, they're lazy." Hell, we infited hard work. I used to work on the railroad. We would be carrying a 30-foot piece of rail, six of us. Now they got machinery to do it, and we don't have sense enough to, a lot of you say, "We don't have sense enough to do it, run the machines." We can if we learn, like all these jobs I see out there. I see them young white boys out there. They get them in there and teach them the trade, but they want to talk down on the black boys. It don't make sense to me. It really don't. What I see in it is encouraging racism. Well, our president is a racist, that's, he, he done say it time and time again. He don't like black people, he just like them he could use. But our people should wake up and not be used. Not be used. Don't let nobody use you. You might not have as much education as they got, but don't be no fool. For nobody. For nobody. Things going to change eventually. Things are going to change. They can't stay the way it is. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there any other citizens to be heard this evening? Last call for any other citizens to be heard. Hearing none, Ms. Rose.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16064, official ordinance number 42019. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Jones, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16064, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 42019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 42019, finally, Baez, six, nay, zero. Council File Number 16065, official ordinance Number 52019. An ordinance approving the extension of the term of the existence of the Erie Regional Airport Authority for a term extension of 50 years from the date of approval of the Articles of Amendment. By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Ms. Allen, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16065, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 52019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 52019, finally, Baez, six, nay, zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 16066. An ordinance closing and vacating approximately 12-foot-long section of unimproved alley at the southwest corner of 5th and Cranberry Streets with reservation of existing utility rights of way. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Number 16066, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16066, Baez, six, nay, zero, on first reading. Council File Number 16067. An ordinance amended, amending Article 313, Peddlers and Sidewalk Vendors, Section 313.03, Subsection A, 11, and B, by increasing the liability insurance limits and application fees. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the Council File Ordinance Number 16067, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski.
Mr. President. Just a quick comment if I could.
Mr. Jones?
I'm absolutely in agreement with this process. I think this would just, this would just be a good time to voice a concern that I have. We are increasing the fees for vendors in our community, which is fine. I think it's appropriate, it hasn't been raised since I was eight years old, so, since 1983, so it makes sense. What doesn't make sense to me is that we do have other businesses in town that may be more stable or more steady inside businesses, restaurants, bars, et cetera, which is wonderful. It's what we do downtown. But if they can extend their business out of side of their building with no expense, yet gain great revenue potentially, or they wouldn't probably do it, for their business, but they're doing and getting that for free. But John Q. Vendor with a hot dog stand could be 10 feet away and has to pay $200 now. To me, it's a little bit of a lopsided thing. So I just want to, I think we've had some conversation about this, and we'll have continued conversation. I think we have a will. The administration said that they're looking at how the best way craft that, because it's a little bit different, because it's a steady or consistent, or a constant easement into the, to the right-of-way. But I didn't want to let this opportunity go to say that there's not much difference between the street vendor, who's, who he or she is doing their thing outside and raising, and that's their business, to a person who goes to, go onto the same sidewalk, maybe a few feet down the street, and they get to do that for free. I think it's a bit of a lopsided situation, but I also believe that there's some change happening with that, so. I just wanted, again, don't want to overtalk it, but I just wanted to take that moment to say that I'm excited to hear that there's a movement to make sure something like that is happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And my vote is yes.
Continuing with roll call, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16067, Baez, six, nay, zero. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero sixty-seven, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file sixteen zero sixty-eight. An ordinance amending prerequisites to obtaining a permit under Article nine oh one, Street Evacuations or Excavations, Section nine oh one point oh four, Section, subsection E, by increasing the liability insurance limits. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number sixteen zero sixty-eight, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero sixty-eight, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file sixteen zero sixty-nine. An ordinance amending prerequisites to obtaining a permit under Article nine oh one, Street Excavation, Section nine oh one point oh six, by increasing the fees. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number fifteen sixteen zero sixty-nine, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero sixty-nine, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file sixteen zero seventy. An ordinance amending Article nine thirty-five, Sewers and Utility Connections, Section nine thirty-five point zero three, by increasing fees. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Council file read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file sixteen zero seventy-one, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from Erie Arts and Culture. The funds will be utilized to install vinyl art wraps on electrical signal and electrical cabinets located in Perry Square. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-one, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-one, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file number sixteen zero seventy-two. An ordinance appropriating the sum of two thousand four hundred dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from Erie Arts and Culture. The funds will be utilized to install vinyl art wraps on signal and electrical cabinets located in the downtown area. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-two, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-two, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file sixteen zero seventy-three. An ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, school violence prevention. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance file number sixteen zero seventy-three, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-three, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file sixteen zero seventy-four. An ordinance in accordance with the twenty nineteen city of Erie budget, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the use by the city of Erie Administration Grant Fund. These funds will be used to provide media services to city of Erie first responder employees. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-four, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero seventy-four, bay six, nay zero, on first reading. Shoo.
Very good.
Mr. President. Take a breath. If I could just take a, a moment, I see we have, uh, looks like some younger citizens in the room today as, uh, opening up agendas and trying to figure out what we're doing. If, as a former political science student myself, I just wanted to just take a moment if I could, just to explain to those students from a teaching point. Maybe you can grasp a little from this, what we just went through. By law, by our, by our process, every ordinance has to be read out loud in its entirety for us as council to vote on it. And so, um, excuse me, so that's what was just happening. So all of the ordinances that are on our agenda for final reading, or final passage, or first passage, excuse me, first, final passage or first reading, have to be read out loud. We vote on them appropriately. The rest of what you're going to experience is probably gonna move a lot faster. And, and I won't, I won't assume to think that we're gonna move the balance of the agenda, but there's gonna be something that happens here pretty soon where someone's gonna say, "Let's just read, let's just go through the rest of this a little bit faster." And that's gonna be myself, if Mr. President would allow me, because I'm talking about it, to move the balance of the agenda for us to be able to expedite our process of moving this meeting forward.
And I will second it.
Second. Do we have any separations?
Yes, I would like to separate number thirteen.
Under new business?
What number is that?
Thirteen under new business list?
Thirteen, yes.
Any other separations?
Number five and six out of contracts?
I believe that is all, Rose.
Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to donate five thousand dollars from the general government fund, general fund government to the World War One memorial monument for ongoing maintenance. Discussion?
I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I, I talked in caucus with, um, my council colleague, Kaz Kwiatowski. He sponsored this. And I really wish we had had some more information about how this money is going to be spent. I just think we need to know, you know, he said that there's a five oh one C three that's gonna be getting this five thousand dollars. And as we know, we've had some news lately about five oh one C threes. And, you know, it is from city funds, so I would have appreciated having some more information about how this five thousand dollars is going to be spent. I guess it's a one-time thing, but what is the plan to continue to do maintenance on this World War One memorial? There's discussion at the school district about how there, how the other war memorials in the triangle up by Glenwood Park Avenue are going to be maintained. So I would hope that this would be part of that discussion going forward, so that there, there is a plan. Especially because some of the other memorials, the people who have been tending to them are getting older. And so there needs to be a, a maintenance plan overall to look at that. And Kaz said this, he thinks is going to be actually a plaque at Collegiate Academy or outside at the stadium. But I wanted to have some more information about that, and I think the public should know how the five thousand is gonna be spent. But I'll vote in favor of it. But we frequently ask the administration to provide more background information to us before we vote on something, and I think we need to do the same thing as council people.
Mr. President.
Yes.
To my colleague, this was discussed last year, and it didn't get on the agenda for many reasons. The committee is made up of prominent people, which your former boss, the newspaper and the media, have, have covered. They are properly organized. They meet regularly. The plan is to erect a monument. I'm not part of the committee, so I can't tell you whether it's going on the wall or out in the park. My feeling is it's going on the school. And it's going to be so the public can have a visual presence of the World War One, which is the only monument that has not been recognized in that park area. Although the stadium itself is a World War One memorial, the actual, uh, what do you call it, corner piece that adorn it is on the inside of the French Street entrance, which is not used many times. So the plan is to recognize World War One. And to further, as a, as one of the officers of the Korean Project and a member of the Vietnam Project, we all meet and we all have things set up to take care of the monuments for years to come. There is money being set up in trust funds and properly that you don't have to worry about that. And if you want more information, I will get the committee to contact you and to, you know, fill you in. But just to make you aware that this is no different than we did for Korea, for World War Two, for Vietnam. And the county is also a participant. So it would look rather embarrassing if the city did not keep up and did their part.
How much, how much is the county contributing?
Pardon?
How much is the county contributing?
I couldn't tell you. You'd have to ask them. But the problem is that the money is, it's not a problem. The money is used for long-term maintenance in case there's damage or any maintenance issues, you know, involved around the site. With that said, I'll make sure that they contact you.
Okay. And just, I just wanted to clarify. You mentioned Ed Mead. And Ed died in two thousand and fifteen, so it has been a few years, so. And I don't remember this discussion from last year. It could have been last year, but I think it was probably before I came on council.
Every, every monument committee faces a problem that, and I'm sure Betz, Attorney Betz, I can tell you, they get in the five one three C. Can be very difficult and expensive. So what usually happens is a lot of the military organizations piggyback with a, a sponsoring American Legion or a VFW post. And they have their own committees, and it worked out well for us. As you can see, there's three monuments presently in the park. There'll probably be a, a fourth one, unfortunately. Wars being as they are, the, the next one to come up will probably be the, the war involving the Mideast. But I assure you that the committee is legit and that they're properly organized. Otherwise, I wouldn't recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski. Rose?
All right. Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Schoff, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to builders inspection underwriters of PA eighteen oh five West Thirty-Eighth Street Erie for a one-year contract for plumbing and mechanical inspection services for the Bureau of Code Enforcement.
Mr. President, I know Mr. Kwiatowski did separate these two items. I, I just wanted to just ra- not raise concern, but just for, for conversation's sake for a moment. When we are looking to re-up contracts or extend contracts to organizations or entities, businesses, I think the, the bidding process is really important, especially for something like this. Now, I do understand the, the situation here is a little bit unique because we did go through a bidding process a couple of years ago. This was kind of continuing, it's a bit of a continuation of that same bidding process. I think it might be a way of articulating it from the administration's perspective, not trying to put words in their mouths. But there was some concern. A few council members had at least some question and thought there might be another opportunity for extending or, or bidding this out again. And individuals mentioned that they didn't think that was necessary. I'll make this statement, and, and this is in no way to, to come across as negative, but just for the sake of perception. So, um, there are not very many people who do the work that BIU does in relation to inspections that they do for our, in particular, our rental property program. There are some individuals who, just a couple of years ago, did put a bid in that were a part of the, the team here in City Hall. There was a belief that that proposal wasn't the best financial route to go. I think, you know, like anything else in City Hall or any other political place, there's a, there are political things that happen and you don't really know all the details on some level. So I guess I would just put this out there. I'm gonna vote for these, for both of these moving forward. I think many of the questions that I had even two years ago have been answered. Not a hundred percent, but we also have an out clause in every contract, as we are, we were made aware of, not aware of, but made sure that was there in every contract, as we, we heard in the, excuse me, caucus room. Anytime, this is a unique space, but anytime that there's a contract or something being bid where I think that our union, uh, or a union group is bidding, there should be a consideration of someone in addition to, if not someone separately from the administration alone looking at that. Especially if there's a long-term relationship with a previous organization or business that's provided the service. I think just because sometimes there could be some conflicts there. Not even intentionally, not maliciously, but just a reality that it would be good to have another set of eyes looking to see. Because when you, when, when you, when you have one group saying that the numbers are X, Y, and Z, and other groups saying that the numbers are A, B, and C, you really don't know who's who and what's what. And they're somewhat at opposite ends of the, the conversation. So I won't be long, up or labor this any longer. I guess my thing is I will vote in favor because I think we have to move forward. We have to do this work in relation to our rental ordinances and the inspections that need to be done. I feel confident that we can, if something needs to be changed, our controller, in relation to what she does in her office, is well able to access the information. I would love to have that information in our building, since it's our information. That's a whole nother conversation probably. But also, I think, moving forward, not with this, this instance, but any instance where a union organization in-house wants to bid, we should look at who's evaluating those bids beyond just the administration, just to make sure that there are ample eyes looking from different perspectives, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President? I agree with my colleague pretty much. He's nicer than I was gonna be about it. But I, I'm really disappointed that we didn't bid this out. My understanding was it would be bid out. To be told that it was bid out two years ago, I don't know of any bid that's relevant two years ago. I don't know why they didn't want to bid this out. If they couldn't find somebody or they had already contacted someone, I hope council would have been, made aware of that. I do know the only one that I knew for sure that was gonna bid, as we mentioned earlier, was in-house, our own union. I too agree with Councilman Jones that I think having the administration, which at times can be not the proper judge to deal with the union because of issues that arise over the years, or feelings, or people that are, you know, have feelings about other people. I think it would have made sense to, yes, have somebody, another fresh set of eyes, some independent business people look at it and put it out for bid. We don't know if it would have been higher or lower. Yes, some things have changed and for the better at BIU, but they change because this- Yes, some things have changed and for the better at BIU, but they changed because this council put a foot up somebody's rear end and started yelling about it many years ago. And it seems to be the only way things happen. But to not bid it out, I'm very, very disappointed. I don't know the reason, and I say that while two years ago it was high, you know, many years ago I was 16, too.
Many, many years.
Many years ago, right. None of them are relevant today, so I'm voting no for that reason.
Anyone else? Rose?
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski?
No.
Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. This resolution will adopt five to one. By Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Schaff, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a two-year and three-month, January 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2021, contract extension with building insurance underwriters, inspection underwriters of Pennsylvania, 1805 West 38th Street Erie, at the current rates for inspection services for the City of Erie's rental program. Discussion?
Mr. President, my intention was to ask if we could kind of have a conversation about both of those together. I know they're somewhat different issues, so I just want to echo everything I said earlier without saying it again, in relation to the contract, in relation to this process. Again, just wanted to kind of echo all those same comments. And I will say this, though, the question about the administration being the only set of eyes that look at a bid from a union or a group in this, in City Hall, was a thought that came when we literally walked out of caucus. So I don't want to think that it was a kind of a blind side, kind of a statement, because I don't, that's not the way I do business. But it was kind of a hot off the grill thought, you know, if you have a union and administration, maybe there should be another set of eyes. So I did just want to bring some clarity to that as well. But again, I can wing all my same points for this particular item in the agenda.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to add, Rose, before we came out tonight and voted on this, another thing, we were informed that this contract does have outs, or we, it's not set in stone for two years and three months. There is outs to contracts that aren't penalized to the city, but in case something has happened in that timeframe where things aren't up to snuff, or we're not happy as a council or administration, that contract can be voided. So with that being said.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski?
No.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. And this resolution will adopt five to one. That will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Allen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Winarsky. I, a couple, last week, I think I said, I actually, it occurred to me when I was in the shower, that's where I get my best ideas, but I had been pressing the administration to come up with performance reviews for management employees, and it occurred to me that if we're, if, at least if I was going to expect that there would be, you know, goals and metrics to measure what, how management employees are doing in the new year, that we should also be thinking about individual goals for council members on our own, and also maybe we could agree on some goals together on things we wanted to work on. So I came up with 10 goals, and I shared them with my council colleagues, so I'm just gonna read them very quickly, because they kind of fit in with the very short committee report I have. And the first one is to work on ways to improve communication with the administration and with citizens. I think communication is really key as we go forward. A couple people at the caucus session were talking about how we were all getting our footing in the first year, we have a new mayor, some, you know, people on council who are just going into our second term, so I think communication is important. I've suggested that we have some monthly lunch and learn workshops for council members and possibly the public, so that we can do some professional training. Kathy Schaff and I went last year and saw how the rental inspection program data is gathered, and that was really informative, and I think that would be useful at some point for council members and the public maybe to be able to learn about that. I went through and I did a, I built a, kind of a calendar of all the meetings that various council members have to go to, so I came up with one day when there are no other conflicting meetings, so I think we might be able to do this once a month, depending on the interest. I think it's also time that we start thinking, kind of reimagine the East Avenue Task Force. There was one that was created a number of years ago, I think it was the East Avenue Business Task Force, and we know that the viaduct is, has been coming down, so what do we do? We don't want to just drop that and say, you know, there was, there was a very controversial issue with a lot of discussions, so what can we do to make sure that there is attention paid to the east side, especially East Avenue? I think we have to get some status reports on some ordinances that were talked about in 2018, that some citizens have been pressing us on, including the alternative lawn ordinance and the conversion therapy ban. I think we need to find a way to move forward with, on equitable development ideas. We've had a lot of discussion from citizens coming in and talking about community benefits agreements. One of the areas I suggested where we might be able to work on a local, some type of local hire or training requirement is with the millions that are going to be spent on the capital improvement project for the wastewater treatment plant. I went to the sewer authority meeting yesterday, and Veronica Rexford, who's on the sewer authority, had asked about that, and the sewer authority solicitor said it should be city council, which should come back with some type of requirement on that. So Veronica said she would work with us. I think there's real opportunity there to be able to show, you know, how does that work? How do we get the training? And I talked to somebody else who's involved in job training, he said that Governor Wolf is really committed to, you know, job training and apprenticeship programs and everything, so there's some real opportunity there. Kathy Schaff and I have been talking about creating a historic preservation task force, and the city planner Kathy Rosdick has been emailing me some great information about how that can move forward with a lot of good collaboration between the administration and council and citizens who are experts on historic preservation and how it ties into economic development. I think it's also, we need to probably take a look at the Erie Refocus Comprehensive Plan. What does council, how does council need to act to make sure that those recommendations just don't fall by the wayside? One of the things that I think we kind of had put into a back burner was that there was a recommendation to create a housing court, and that came up at the Blighted Property Review Committee meeting last week. There's sometimes unequal treatment when somebody is cited for a code violation, and the idea with a housing court was that there would be one district magistrate who would be assigned to take care of that, to make sure that when somebody, you know, is cited for code violations, that they follow through it and make sure that they have their payments. This gets into what happens overall with Blight and the city. We also, we assembled a list of 32 suggestions for the budget going forward. I still think we need to work on ways to make council appointments to boards and authorities more representative of the community, and we will be needing to cooperate and provide input to the early intervention consultants who are gonna be working with the city on how to get a handle on our finances. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Councilwoman Schaff, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for voting me as vice president.
It is on our agenda that, which wasn't separated, but Councilwoman Schaff is Vice President of Council, just so everybody knows. Thank you.
Yesterday, I went to the Erie County Human Relations Commission meeting, and there was a woman there who was talking about a concern for para-transit that got stuck in a daycare bill on page 14, and she wants people to call their legislators, because there's a concern that if brokers take over, there will be no county authorities, no counties or authorities that will be allowed to be a broker. And she was very concerned about brokers, because she knows of some in different cities where they didn't show up, they didn't have a late shift, they did not expand their bus services. So seniors who have Medicaid, I believe, the brokers are going to determine if they are going to pick up a person or not, so I think there's like a comment period till January 25th, and she highly recommends that people call their legislators about that. The human county, Human Relations Commission Advisory Meeting, I'm sorry, that's what it was, and they are dividing into subcommittees for Housing Committee, Employment Committee, Public Accommodations Committee, Research, and Outreach Committee, because some people don't even know that they exist. So they're going to have these subcommittees, and hopefully more and more people will be able to use them as needed. I went to the Erie Planning Commission meeting, and they elected their new officers, and they have been working for a while with the LED signage, which also is on our agenda that we passed today. And they've been doing a lot of research with that, and there's a very good article on Go Erie today about that as well. I attended the How to Avoid the School-to-Prison Pipeline, and am thankful to everyone who presented. There was a lot of information there, and I took lots of different packets, but the one thing I really want to talk about today is the tech after hours. And I met Charlene, who is really involved with this program, she's the Adult Education Manager, and I actually met her on Saturday at a benefit. But there's 30 people enrolled in this tech after hours program, and they have auto mechanics, patient care assistant program, construction trades, machine technology, and welding technology. And this is an excellent program for people 17 years of age and older, and who are not currently enrolled in high school. And the people in this program are getting hands-on education, and they put them in an internship, and they're starting to work at things. So it's really important that people know about this program, because they want it to continue. And if no one knows about it, and they're not going to it, then they may lose their funding in the long run. So there's affordable training, scholarships, job placement assistance, and that's really important. There's also student assistant attendance improvement programs that Erie has, and gifted and talented education, and they really have so much to offer. I can't believe my time's up already. Thursday and Friday, don't travel between McCollin and 43rd and Rice Avenue, because they're doing sewer work, and from 8:00 till 5:00, those, that road, that stretch of the road will be blocked off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaff. Mr. Witherspoon, I, we didn't mean to skip you there, but do you have any comments this evening?
[laughing]
Did we wake you?
No.
We'll move on, Mr. Kowalski.
This will be brief, I wasn't feeling good for about a week and a half, so I'll do my best here. Today I heard from a citizen, which this made me that during this meeting, we did something nice for a group of veterans who are long deceased, every one of them, and that was great. But today, a citizen comes up here and says that we're not flying the flag in front of City Hall? If that's true, that's an embarrassment. And if that is the case, I can certainly find the city a replacement flag that we have flying at the Korean War Memorial. It won't be the greatest shape, but it'd be suitable for flying, because we recycle ours on a regular basis. But even so, if in our budget, we can't find enough money to buy a set of flags to properly fly, then we have a big problem, bigger than I thought. As one of the few vet, well, the only veteran that's elected at City Hall, and a member of the Legion, that is a terrible oversight that many veterans do not like or do not want to see. And I get many calls, so I'm hoping this problem is rectified tomorrow, or I will find a flag for you. Moving on, I attended the EPA meeting, that's Erie Parking Authority, and I was a little dismayed to find out that the board is being, well, in theory disbanded. Now, what disappoints me is that no one bothered to notify me as a liaison that this was happening. The first I heard about it was from a person who called me and said they saw it on, not the city website, but Facebook. Now, I don't have a Facebook account, and I don't want one. The website, that would be okay, but it wasn't on there. When I checked my phone, my city phone, with city messages, nothing there except a message from John Villa, and that one said that the parking authority wasn't being replaced, it wasn't being one of them mentioned. I don't know what's going on. We pay two people at City Hall to do media work, and I can't get a message on my phone or the courtesy to find out that the board I serve on, as the liaison, is being disbanded. There's something wrong here. Does not even thank those gentlemen, or those members of the board, after all their years of service, for them to find out like I did is embarrassing. There is no reason for it. And I didn't know about it, and I'm sure they didn't either, because when I checked the website, it wasn't there. And I don't have a Facebook account, and I don't want to hear about any more Facebook account stuff in City Hall. If you can't have the courtesy to send it out over the webpage or the city mail, then don't bother, because I'm not gonna look at Facebook, I have no time for it, I, you know, it's nothing but a problem. But these, this authority was being disbanded, should have had the courtesy of being notified and thanked for their service. If you look at the years of service, the things that have happened with the parking authority, there would be no baseball park without the parking authority. There would have been no removal of the Transway Mall without the authority. There would have been no civic center without the authority. And there have been many other things. They plowed many of the parking lots that the city didn't do when it was our, when it was our problem. They parked, they plowed the civic center for events, and at the, right now, they're in the midst of having a new director, and also the fact that they're involved in some of the, the biggest technical upgrade we've done in years with the apps for the parking meters and everything, and to just disband a board, to not do it systematically, or to even give them the courtesy, or their liaison, of what was going on, to me, was an oversight. I'm embarrassed to say that it happened, and I hope it doesn't happen in the future, but I want to assure everybody that the board itself is, right now, is doing a great job. They're continuing with the upgrade of the parking meters, there's more coming down the line, things that haven't been discussed yet, and the, all the, their present physical stock is being maintained properly. And they're not coming to the city for any funds, although they do contribute some to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, in relation to the rental licensing program, that was when I first came on council multiple years ago, that was one of the first and largest initiatives and projects that I've That was one of the first and largest initiatives and projects that I was a part of. And so it's very passionate, a part of, part of, you know, what I want to do here on council is make sure that that is operating at its most efficient way possible, understand their rules, that it has to be revenue neutral and all of those dynamics. It's just great to have, we need an increased level of transparency. When I, when I say that, a lot of times when people say that, that means that people are purposely being non-transparent. That's not what I'm implying. I'm just saying that it's just good to have as much information as possible available because we get questions that we can't answer if we don't know where to go to get the answer for the question. So a lot of times, it's been challenging over the last couple of years, for at least in my experience, I can't speak for anyone else, to sometimes get the information. So there's complaints and there's processes. And so we, again, have cleared up a lot of those things, so that's why I was willing to vote in favor of moving forward with the contract, even with the bidding question that was out there looming still. One of the interesting things that Mr. Kwiatowski mentioned, if there's a way of, whether it be from the authority, the parking authority, or from the administration, or someone to be able to get council some information in detail, personally, I would like to see that and just kind of see what that process looks like, what is, what are the changes. I wasn't familiar with any of that, so, again, nothing major, super detailed, but just some kind of information would be great, not, you know, if we could have that in our box or something like that, if it's doable. In relation to my committee, particular committees, I'll be honest with you, I'm still trying to get used to carrying two phones. When I was on council, we've just got phones, and no one was ever using them. Not everyone's using them, and so I feel like I'm the antiquated one who's not using my city cellphone. So if anyone's tried to contact me via that or anything, I do apologize. I'm still, I thought I'd erased a former council member's name off the voicemail, and it's still there. I don't know what I'm doing with that. So, again, over the next couple of weeks, I will continue to just kind of get acclimated with those types of things and some of the new processes. I do want to thank Councilwoman Allen for sending some information to me a couple of weeks ago, just in relation to some pilot stuff, and I did not respond, but I did recognize and did do some, some work around it. So I do apologize for not responding, but I do want to acknowledge I got it. And finally, I guess I would, I said it before, and I didn't act on it, but I will, between, before now and the end of the month, I'll look to be able to have a conversation with someone in the administration, Mr. Mayor, whoever you would assign, or whatever that dialogue looks like, and find out what kind of what's going on with the pilot program, what, who, or what individuals are kind of maybe tasked with that, or if this is more of a corporate effort. And if, and whatever those efforts are, is there room for us as council, or at least some kind of a connection from council liaison to be a part of that? Because I think it's all about relationship building and nuance and negotiation, so that's something that I am very interested in. So however that would work, I would be really excited about being a part of that and at least having a dialogue in relation to that. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Very brief, I know Mr. Bibbs brought up something, whether the school tax formula is a, is being formulated the right way, I don't know. Without costing the city of Erie too much time and money, if something like that, we can check into, even for our own sake or for the citizens of Erie's sake, that whatever that formula may be, if it's being done the right way, we're all paying school taxes, and whether they are or aren't, I don't know. Whether Mr. Bibbs has a valid request there, I don't, you know, it's something that possibly can be checked into. The biggest thing is I don't want a major expense on the city in checking into it, okay? Want to thank my colleagues, though, after our last council meetings, we, we did get our appointments and our liaisons, whether it be with police, fire, the authorities, anything that I, at all I can do as president to help, possibly attend, or anything you need on your end, please don't hesitate to convey or converse because we are in this together. The citizens out there, if you have a special issue or inquiry on any set item, if you can go online and see which particular council person is the liaison to that department, or you can call the clerk's office, and they will lead you to which, get you information on which council person is responsible or is taking control of that said department or authority. Other item I had, we had three items on our first reading. I know our last budget session was what we can do, revenue, revenue, revenue. I know it may not add up to a lot, but it's been probably over 10 years since we increased permits or fees for any digging or any, say, utilities, whether it be national fuel or Erie water when they dig up our streets. There is a fee to do that, and it's been over 10 years since we've raised that. Well, on this agenda today, on our first reading, there is increases in there that at the end of the year may add up to possibly $50,000 and beyond. May not be a lot of money, but one of those items that, you know, we had well over 30 of them in our budget session, that maybe we can get a little here, a little there, a little there. And with this being, naturally, it's only first reading, after it is passed in our second reading, may add some additional revenue that will definitely help our budget. Other than that, I think that's it on my end. Ms. Controller.
I do not have any report today.
Report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. I attended the inauguration for John Fetterman and Tom Wolfe yesterday down in Harrisburg, and I just wanted to let you know that it was, it was a neat event. There were literally thousands of people there. There were a lot of different events. I got to meet a lot of people, make a lot of connections at the state level that I think will benefit us down the road. What impressed me most, though, was the message in their speeches. Two things, they talked about how they value diversity, and they really want to create diversity at a state level, and as you know, that's an important part of our vision here for the city. And they also talked about how people in Pennsylvania are working together more now than ever before, and that certainly is true in my experience here in Erie as well. So I was glad to hear those things. Also got to spend quite a bit of time with Ryan Bizarro, Pat Harkins, your former colleague Bob Mersky, as well as Julie Slomsky, who, as you know, runs the governor's office here in Erie. Wanted to just mention Brett Wyler to make sure you're all aware that he'll be leaving the city at the end of this month to become the, kind of the director of the Opportunity Zones for the Chamber of Commerce. We have our eight Opportunity Zones in Erie. That's a real opportunity for us to grow business and family sustaining jobs here. Brett's kind of become the local expert in that, so he'll be on the chamber's payroll, but he'll be doing work that really benefits the city. We did, and Kathy Schaff had texted me about, you know, do we really need to replace him? And we did talk seriously about that. You probably saw my response, Kathy.
Yes, thank you.
And he, the work he was doing with the city was very different than the work he's going to be doing. So we kind of have an employee that the chamber's paying, who's really going to be helping us build the city here now in Brett. But we, he, for instance, met with over 200 small and medium-sized businesses in Erie to understand their situation, to direct them, and we feel we need somebody still doing that job. So we did post the position, and I think, last I heard, we had like 50 resumes indicating interest, so Chris Groener will be working through that, and we do plan to replace Brett. We're sorry to lose him, but we're kind of happy with the new role he's going to be in as well. It's really going to help in a lot of ways. Next, we're, as you know, I think you're all scheduled for a monthly meeting, a meeting at the end of January here with us, and that's something that we'd like to do monthly with you, and we can, I don't know if that's for Thursday works, but, you know, a time that's convenient for everybody. And we'll be talking about stuff that's not ready to go public yet, and, you know, I want to kind of bring you in more. I think you've asked for this, to be part of the discussion, give us input and direction if you don't agree with the direction we're going. But as you know, if there's four or more of you together, we need to have the media present, so we're scheduling those meetings with three or two, and we'll probably have to have three meetings, but, you know, you'll all be invited and hopefully be able to participate monthly where we can go over those sorts of things with you. There's a call-in meeting scheduled next Wednesday. That's part of Unified Erie. They're very powerful. They take young people who are kind of on the verge of becoming criminals, they, you know, they haven't become criminals yet, but they're kind of running in the wrong circles and that sort of thing, and calls them in and gives them the offer of some help to have a good, productive, wholesome life, but also makes it very clear if they don't, jail is the other option. They're, that's very powerful, and that's coming up next week, and hopefully we'll get some really good results. In, I want to just go back to that meeting here coming up at the end of January with all of you. Two things we'll be talking about in some detail at that is the ULI report. We'll show you the actual report. You can, you know, take one with you to read as well, explain to you what's going on with that and where things are. And we also want to share with you some goals we're in the process of setting right now for how to measure how we're doing to achieve our vision going forward, so you'll be part of that. And just one last comment on the parking authority, Cas. They were all told at a board meeting, and they're not being discharged, all their terms are expired and have been for quite some time. And we told them, we told, excuse, we told them at the board meeting they could reapply, and they all have.
What board meeting?
The parking authority.
I was there, you weren't there.
Well, Christopher Friday.
I was there. He.
He told us, he told them all, and we asked.
Yeah, but none of them before that meeting were aware of it.
Well, but they were told at the board meeting. They're not being discharged.
But the public knew about it before they did.
Can I just interject something here? Those appointments expired in 2010.
Yes.
So why wasn't the liaison to the parking authority raising a concern about why appointments were allowed to linger for that long? 2010, all of them.
The mayor.
I just want to, I want to applaud the mayor for looking at all these appointments.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Every, this is, first of all, I'm talking. Every mayor, every mayor, wait a minute, every mayor knows the appointments. The previous mayor knew them. We know them, we're advised of them also. They serve at the request of the mayor. He has the power to keep them on longer, which many mayors did. So, yes, I'm not complaining about Mr. Schember getting rid of them. That's his privilege, and it's not my job to tell him that, okay? That, those are his appointments, not ours. I am, I am a little disappointed that when we attended that board meeting, which I was there, the public was well aware of it before they were. They weren't given the courtesy before the public was notified. That is my concern. They deserved the courtesy. If you're going to get, if you're going to get replaced, at least get a phone call going, well, you know, in five minutes, I'm going to make an announcement, you're getting cut. Okay, Ms. Allen? And yes, everybody knew about the appointments. It's not my job to control the administration. I, you know, they're, they're well aware of their appointments. They're their appointments, not mine.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I talk again?
Yes, sir.
One last thing I wanted to mention is we have the People's Supper. That's actually going to start tomorrow night. That's a program that we've been working on a lot last year to prepare. We're getting started. There's several suppers. There's 80 people going to participate in these, representing four different segments of our community here in Erie. There's an African-American group, Hispanic group, a New American group, and a White Ally group. And they'll be meeting together, going over things, and it's all be run by the People's Supper. Those of us in the administration will be there to welcome them, but then we leave when they're having the conversations. They have specific questions they'll be addressing, and then we'll go back at the end to hear from them and get direction from them. We're really hoping a lot positive can come out of this. The, the group that runs this has done it, I think, over 2,000 times in various communities. They're very excited about this because we've kind of designed something that's very different than anything they've done before in terms of trying to come up with tangible, measurable results. So we're very anxious. If any of you want to attend the opening and say hello and greet people, you're welcome to come. But again, we're, none of, no elected official, myself or no other, will actually be present during the supper and the conversations. We're going off to a separate room. My administrative staff and I, and we're going to talk about the same things, but separate from the.
What is that date again, Mr. Mayor?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow is the first one, yes.
What time is?
It is at, let's see, 5:00. And it's at the Erie Insurance Puffer Belly, the old Puffer Belly, where Erie Insurance has a.
Thank you.
Yes. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Betz, anything?
I guess just in light of the conversation about the boards, all board positions, it's my opinion, should be filled. When they expire, I know that oftentimes people take the position, you continue to serve until removed. The problem is most boards are staggered with membership, so there's not complete turnover. If there's not a replacement of a board member, let's say it's a seven-member board, and we don't replace them for five or 10 years, then all of their terms are expired, and then when you go to replace, you're replacing everything, so you lose continuity. So it's kind of a learning process for everyone. I mean, the mayor's new, I'm new, but I have said all board positions should be appointed, whether it's the same people or not. You've got to figure out who to appoint, depending who's making the appointment, but we should not have, it's my opinion, we should not have carryover. We should reappoint if we want to keep the person in the position.
I agree. I believe that's it. Thanks, everyone, for coming out this evening. We're done.
City Council adjourns at 9:04. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon.